And to start off, I would like to say a huge ngamahi to Nico Winera, who has helped me with tonight's translation because I just did not have the time. Thank you so much. So unfortunately, we do not have an electorate video tonight. So no, we do not have award video tonight, Wrong Elections. So we're going to go straight into opening statements. Nico, would you like to start?
Aye. Is there a time or... Okay. Just a twoish. Right. Tēnā koutou ka tua. Ko taienui te waka, ko piti raya te manga, ko raikawa kawa te moana, ko takapuāhia raiwa ko hongwaka ngamarei, ko ngati torangatira, rato ko kaithahu, ko ngapuhi, ko ngati pāhauera ngaiwi, ko terauparaha te tupuna araki, ko Nico Winera toku ingoa. Tēnā koutou ka tua. Kia ora, everybody at home and in the audience. Thank you very much for tuning in. My name is Nico Winera and I'm the Green Party candidate for the new Maori Ward on the Wellington City Council, Te Pūnganui Aotara. My stance for this election, my ambition, is to create a compact, sustainable city with affordable housing, world-class public transport and forward-thinking climate resilience. I have a number of ways that I'm going to deliver on this, but my top priority that overarches all of these is returning our land, our water and our assets back to tangatafinaua. You'll probably hear a bit more from me tonight, but I've been in Wellington, born and bred Kiwi my whole life. I had a brief stint up on the beautiful Karpeti Coast just out of town and I returned for university where I studied tangapura, playing traditional Maori instruments along with teraumari and also German. Following that, I served in the New Zealand Army and I'm now standing for the new Maori Ward on the Wellington City Council. I'll leave it at that for now with the whanau, but Kia ora, thank you very much.
Yes, I love the audience participation. Brilliant. Yes, I have. Brilliant. All right. Thank you. Ellie, your turn.
Ellie Hamlinpainga. Kia ora. Tēnā koutou ka tua. Ngama i maana ke akoto, ko Ellie Hamlinpainga aho. No teatanga mahaki, no ngatika nganu ke heretaunga, he Maori aho. I am standing here today to represent Maori. I'm an independent and I represent the voice of all Maori. I am standing for this electorate because I believe that the Maori voice is missing across all aspects of council business. Affordable housing, infrastructure, arts, community and all those things that make a city vibrant and aspirational. A Maori voice must be heard in all aspects of every community as a tariti partner. And that's what I am here to represent here in Te Pūnganui Aotara. I will do everything possible to ensure that the Maori voice is heard at every decision, at every discussion, at every moment in time and I will create the space for that to occur. Ngamahi. Kia ora.
Thank you for that. Unfortunately, Matthew Riwiti is unable to join us this evening, but he has sent us in a introduction video and his answers to be read out for him. So we'll go to that video now.
I'm the Labor Party candidate for the brand-new Maori Ward Te Pūnganui Aotara for Wellington City Council. I'm sorry I'm not there tonight, but I have sent some answers. Hopefully, they might make some of the show. If not, I guess I've got ammunition for my Twitter account, @PronikiMatt. Anyway, have a great night, Sam. Have a great show and hopefully we'll see you back at the Johnson Mall Market sometime soon. Thank you. Matawa.
All right. So now we're going to take a quick technical break because unfortunately, my co-host was unable to make it at the last minute. So I'm doing both jobs today. So I'm going to move myself down to the other end and we'll see you back here in a minute. Thank you. All right. And we are back for the ballot box questions. So in these 30 boxes here, we have randomized questions that have been submitted from the Wellington community. 28 of them are questions. Two of them are booby prizes in the style of it's in the bag. One is defer the question to another candidate. The other is dodge the question. The point behind these is to try not to use them because it means you're getting out of a curly question. However, if you do pull them, you get to choose another box and if you don't use the card, you can keep it as a souvenir. So would anyone in particular like to start or would you like me to choose?
Okay.
All right. Nico, choose a box number, please. 1 to 30.
9, please.
9? All right. Change hands because I've learnt this. Sam has sealed the boxes up nice and tight. And that is question number 17. So, do you think it's appropriate to have so much central and southern housing land used for vehicle storage such as car yards? What will you do to find alternative accommodation for these businesses so that we can have more housing?
Shall I stand or sit?
Totally up to you.
Okay, let's sit. So I think there are two questions there. The first is about the provision of car parking and car storage spaces around our city in general. And the second one is how we can densify housing by using our existing land provision. So to answer the first part of that question, my stance is that by the end of the decade, we need to cut our personal vehicle usage by at least 50% in order to meet our urgent climate change obligations. Now, that's not going to be an easy task because a lot of our whanau do drive cars to commute around the city, my whanau included. And also, we have to consider elderly or whanau living with disabilities who may need mobility access that can only be achieved with a personal vehicle. That said, I think that the land that is currently being used for car parking spaces and vehicle storage could be far better used as social housing, affordable housing, public green spaces and all other manner of public amenities that we can offer in a capital city. To answer the second part of that question, I think that in terms of how we can densify housing well, I think we should absolutely look at what kinds of provision we have in the South Coast in terms of our land, our central city as well, and use our zoning laws smartly so we can create density done well without blocking access to sunlight, water, community, et cetera. That said, we do live in a harbour surrounded by hills and unfortunately, it is my belief that the only way is up. Kia ora.
Fair enough. All right. Ellie, would you like to choose a box number, please?
3.
3? All right. Apparently, I still haven't learned to do this. That's all right. Just a little bit. That is question number 16. So how do you propose to foster a more positive public impression of more active modes of transport such as cycling and walking?
Well, I think first of all, we have to consider all modes of transport. Obviously, there is particular parts of the community where cycling and walking absolutely suit them. However, when we work with the most vulnerable of the vulnerable, that isn't always the case. Often, cycling and especially cycling and other modes of transport which are associated to climate change are often a middle-class response to that. And so we have to understand the connectivity of all people, not just those who can afford it, not just those who are able to and especially with vulnerable communities and those communities who take care of intergenerational whanau. Walking and getting people to where they need to be isn't always the option. So I think it's about collectiveness, it's about collective intelligence and it's about working with everybody and not just particular parts of the community.
As somebody who cannot ride a bike, I can ride a bike, but I am unable because of disabilities and who is also not allowed to drive. I like that answer. Thank you very much. Now, are we able to choose a box for Matthew?
13.
13? All right.
Testing.
Okay. And now we'll go to question number 18. Delaying projects that reduce climate change is a well-known strategy by climate change deniers and the fossil fuel industry. What will you do to ensure projects are started and completed in a timely manner and not delayed constantly by small groups of people? Give us just a moment.
It is important that the community has the opportunity to put forward differing points of view through public consultation. However, councillors are elected on their policies and promises. Good governance takes into account pros and cons and relies on elected officials to make decisions. I am standing as a candidate who believes climate change is real, is here and requires action now. I have worked for WWF, the Worldwide Fund for Nature. And it's my opinion that we should take both macro and micro measures to reduce our ecological footprints. I'm looking forward to a future for my children and their children. Thank you.
So we have our usual editor Ray reading those questions out for Matthew tonight and he is playing our cameraman because I am on the stage. So Nico, choose a number, please.
21.
21? Let's not forget the snippies. There you go. And that is question number 1. Should Wellington City Council's social housing firstly be offered to those who are locals?
Okay. My first instinct is aye. We should prioritize those within our city to receive city resources. But that said, it is a fact that we are currently, as a country, facing a housing shortage and we are seeing rapidly rising rates of homelessness in all of our major urban centres and the lists for emergency housing in motels, which are disproportionately Maori, are rising in an incredibly concerning way. So yes, I do believe we should look after our own whanau living within the city, but the government has been forced to make some pretty tough decisions and look at relocating whanau when the supply of housing is simply not sufficient in their own area. So I suppose my short answer is yes, but there's definitely a consideration to be made for those who are most vulnerable and do not have any other option. I think our city should be a role model in looking out for them.
Brilliant. Thank you for that. Ellie, your turn. Choose a box, please.
10, please.
10? No problem. And that is question number 26. The council has to push through some big and expensive projects, particularly Let's Get Wellington Moving and Rapid Transit. Do you think you are up to the job?
Absolutely, I'm up for the job. I have a reputation of getting shit done. And I do that because I'm action-focused and I believe that in order for a place like Wellington to flourish, people like myself, who are leaders already in the community, need to create the space for these things to happen. I am part of an organization who has a national presence, who will soon be internationally on the stage to talk about the things that matter most to the most vulnerable. I have increased an organization 500% over the last four years, not only in workforce but also in income streams. I create strategy and I lead from behind and I ensure that those with the expertise that I don't have are given the space to do what they need to do.
Fantastic. Yes, audience. All right. All right. Can we choose a number for Matthew, please?
26.
26? All right. And that is question number 3. When I find it, there we go. Do you support more housing in the ward? And if so, how would you see this achieved?
I love that he's answered every question. Hmm, yes. By voting for support, widespread flexible zoning, which encourages... Oh, no, let me start again. Yes, I support this. By voting for or supporting widespread flexible zoning, which encourages developers to build good quality, densified housing. Also, resourcing council to speed up consenting. And supporting more apartment conversions in partnership with property owners, takainga. I would encourage council partnership with Manufinua to develop the 6,000-square-meter Granville flat site. This should be a model for best practice, high-quality, sustainable housing. Kia ora.
All right. Thank you for that. Let's mix it up a little bit. Ellie, would you like to choose another box?
11, please.
11? Both dates. Ooh. Gotta love those meaningful numbers. And that is question number 14. Did you attend the protest at Parliament in March and what are your thoughts on it now?
No, I did not. What I did do though is support those rangatahi and those tamariki who ended up being, as a result of, taking care of those who didn't have the opportunity to be informed and make a decision. I do not support anything that doesn't allow the voice of others to take the stage and I absolutely did not support that march and I would never support information that is false and information that does not come from the whakapapa of our tupuna as Maori. Kia ora.
Fantastic. Nico, choose a number, please.
Maybe number 1, please.
Number 1? All right. And that is question number 23. When will you bring in household food waste collection to stop this waste from going to landfill?
That's actually a really fantastic question. There is a wider issue about waste within the city that has a number of really innovative solutions that have been proposed. Obviously, the biggest factor that has led to this current situation has been progressive councils failing to invest in our waste infrastructure. So what I'm proposing to manage not only household food waste but all waste in our city is a circular waste economy where we can eliminate the landfill model as much as possible and create collection sites around the community where waste can circle back, be recycled and then return into a usable fashion without ever leaving the community that it actually came from in the first place. That said, I'm committed to building a waste or laying the groundwork for a waste-free capital city by 2040, which I believe is a realistic target if council is ambitious, takes into account Manufinua expertise on resource and waste management and looks to successful examples internationally, of which there are quite a few. Kia ora.
Fantastic. All right. Can we get a box number for Matthew, please? 4? All right.
That answer gave me goosebumps.
All right. And that is question number 5. I believe we need housing for everyone, more than we need drafty heritage buildings. How will you support more housing against the naysayers in Wellington? When he finds it in the list. Same place it's always been.
I believe we need housing for everyone, more than we need drafty heritage buildings. How will you support more housing against the naysayers in Wellington? Please see my answers for Pahtai, Taro, Tuorua and Tuaturu. I think we answered one of those.
I believe that would be the hard-hitting questions, actually.
Okay. No worries. That makes sense. Yes, thank you.
All right. So we will come back to that answer a little bit later, I believe. That brings us back to Ellie. Choose a box, please.
Oh, my age has gone. 21. Oh, let's go 22. Let's go a year out.
21?
Oh, it's 21. Oh, no.
No, it is gone. Okay, you were right in the first place.
We'll go 22. We'll just go a year out and see if I've learnt anything in the last year.
You get dodge the question. So you can hold on to this and you get to choose another box.
Let's go the upper end of 20. We'll try 20.
20? We saw that. There he is. All right. That is question number 8. Wellington has long been known for its vibrant youth scene. What are you going to do to make sure young people can drive change in the city?
Rangatahi are our future. I absolutely support our rangatahi in everything they do, they say and they be. Part of supporting rangatahi though is to ensure that they have the backing of kōmātua, not me, but kōmātua. They have the backing of... They understand their whakapapa. They understand where they come from. They understand where they are going. The way that I would do that, to ensure that people, that our rangatahi have a say, is doing what I do now. My mahi allows me to work alongside these rangatahi. It allows me to ensure that they have a voice. It allows me to ensure that they also have the support of other kaimahi to support them. One of the things that I support is also the voting age and alongside civics and civic education, that they be given the opportunity to have their say through the most appropriate channels but also to be able to have the support of those of us who have been around just a little bit longer. Kia ora.
All right. Thank you, Ellie. Nico, choose a box, please.
17, please.
Sure. If I can get it out of the box. There we go. Right. Question number 28. Some councils have actively supported hate speech against cyclists. Do you think this is appropriate and what will you do to stop it in the future?
Yeah, this is a funny question. Well, in some ways, because I recently made a submission on a... Quite an omnibus public transport and cycling proposal that was put forward by the regional council and a certain member of that council, whom I will not name, had some pretty interesting interpretations of what cycling looked like, who in the community uses it and the whole cycling culture that he seemed to really be against. So I'm a firm supporter of cycling. All of my flatmates ride bikes. Only one of us owns a personal vehicle. I walk everywhere personally, but I hop on the bike when I need to get somewhere in a hurry. There's really no excuse to be picking on cyclists in our community. People who have the ability to cycle and choose to do so are doing a favour for their own fitness and for the environment. And I think that whilst not everybody does have the capacity to hop on a bike, I think we should definitely respect those who choose to do so and offer them options within our city infrastructure to pursue their hobby and use that sustainable mode of transportation.
Very nice. Thank you. All right. Can we get a box number for Matthew, please?
26.
26? All right. Oh, no, sorry. 26 is gone. Can we try again? 27? We have that one. All right. That is question number 11. We know we need to pay now for essential upgrades that previous councils have avoided because of pushback from homeowners and fear of rates bills. What will you do to stop pushing these expenses onto the younger generations and ensure that the city is maintained as it should be?
His answer is as follows. The two biggest instruments for council to pay for infrastructure, like pipes, roads, libraries and swimming pools, are rates and debt. We need to look at other revenue streams. This will involve working with central government because there are current limitations on what other actions councils can adapt. You're right. Underinvestment has come back to haunt our city. Previous councils have kept rates artificially low. I'm committed to making the hard decisions in council to prioritize projects which are necessary and defer others. We can increase the rates but spread the cost by having more people paying. So building more houses is very important. Building densely is also important. Logically, if we fix central pipes in the city, we can then build above those pipes. However, our chronic housing shortage still requires flexibility across a broad citywide plan. Kia ora.
All right. Thank you. Switch it back up again. Nico, choose a box.
Could I please have number 2?
Number 2, sure thing. All right. And that is question number 22. The council has committed to normalizing teraumari in Maori. No. The council has committed to normalizing teraumari in Purniki. There we go. What will you be doing to ensure that we can achieve this?
Kia ora. Obviously, yeah, massive supporter of teraumari. I did not have the privilege of attending Kōhangarau, mainly because of where I was living at the time. But as soon as I went to university, I hopped into Maori courses and I'm proud to say that I, in about three years, increased my proficiency to the extent that I could talk with my father, who studied earlier in his life and he is a fantastic, beautiful Rial speaker and I was privileged to grow up around him. In terms of normalizing teraumari, I'm absolutely in favour. I've loved seeing the Rial in new places. It seems like every week we find it somewhere else that we haven't seen Rial before and it really makes my heart sing to see that Rial rangatira all over the city. This doesn't just extend to token plastering on billboards though. I think council should look at targeted investment in qualified and quality Rial teachers because that, as I understand it, have...
Do you think this is appropriate? And what will you do to stop it in the future?"
Yeah, this is a funny question. Well, in some ways, because I recently made a submission on a, quite an omnibus, public transport and cycling proposal that was put forward by the regional council. And a certain member of that council, whom I will not name, had some pretty interesting interpretations of what cycling looked like, who in the community uses it, and the whole cycling culture that he seemed to really be against. So I'm a firm supporter of cycling. All of my flatmates ride bikes. Only one of us owns a personal vehicle. I walk everywhere personally, but I hop on the bike when I need to get somewhere in a hurry. There's really no excuse to be picking on cyclists in our community. People who have the ability to cycle and choose to do so are doing a favour for their own fitness and for the environment. And I think that whilst not everybody does have the capacity to hop on a bike, I think we should definitely respect those who choose to do so and offer them options within our city infrastructure to pursue their hobby and use that sustainable mode of transportation.
Very nice. Thank you. All right, can we get a box number four, Matthew, please? Twenty-six? All right. Oh, no, sorry, twenty-six is gone. Can we try again? Twenty-seven? We have that one. All right, that is question number eleven. "We know we need to pay now for essential upgrades that previous councils have avoided because of pushback from homeowners and fear of rates bills. What will you do to stop pushing these expenses onto the younger generations and ensure that the city is maintained as it should be?"
His answer is as follows. "The two biggest instruments for council to pay for infrastructure, like pipes, roads, libraries, and swimming pools, are rates and debt. We need to look at other revenue streams. This will involve working with central government because there are current limitations on what other actions councils can adapt. You're right, under-investment has come back to haunt our city. Previous councils have kept rates artificially low. I'm committed to making the hard decisions in council to prioritise projects which are necessary and defer others. We can increase the rates, but spread the cost by having more people paying. So building more houses is very important. Building densely is also important. Logically, if we fix central pipes in the city, we can then build above those pipes. However, our chronic housing shortage still requires flexibility across a broad citywide plan." Kia ora.
All right, thank you. Switch it back up again. Niko, choose a box.
Could I please have number two?
Number two, sure thing. All right, and that is question number twenty-two. "The council has committed to normalising Tereo in Maori." No, "the council has committed to normalising Tereo Maori in Pāneke." There we go. "What will you be doing to ensure that we can achieve this?"
Kia ora, obviously, yeah, massive supporter of Tereo Maori. I did not have the privilege of attending Ko Hangareo, mainly because of where I was living at the time. But as soon as I went to university, I hopped into Maori courses, and I'm proud to say that I, in about three years, increased my proficiency to the extent that I could talk with my father, who studied earlier in his life, and he is a fantastic, beautiful Rho speaker. And I was privileged to grow up around him. In terms of normalising Tereo Maori, I'm absolutely in favour. I've loved seeing the Rho in new places. It seems like every week we find it somewhere else that we haven't seen the Rho before. And it really makes my heart sing to see that Rho rangatira all over the city. This doesn't just extend to token plastering on billboards, though. I think council should look at targeted investment in qualified and quality Rho teachers, because that, as I understand it, having spoken to a lot of community education providers, is where the communication of our Rho and the teaching of our Rho falls over. That lack of teachers is something that I believe the council can have a really good effect on in terms of funding for community organisations that train people and find people who have these skills. But it's also a matter of self-determination. I think the council should work with Manu Fenua to bring experts from their own rohe to teach their own Rho and include their local dialects, their mitsa, all of those factors that don't necessarily get covered in a standardised Rho class. So, yeah, absolutely in favour. And should I be elected councillor, I would love to push for more funding for Rho courses within our city.
Awesome, thank you. Ellie, choose a number, please.
Five, please.
Five it is. And that is question number twenty-four. "Many people want to cycle around Wellington but live up or downstairs and don't have anywhere to store a bike. Do you support the provision of secure, weatherproof bike parking on city streets so that people can keep their bikes in the same way you currently support car owners?"
Yes, I absolutely do. I appreciate that many parts of the community have different form, require different forms of transportation, and that cycling is one of them. And obviously, in many places in Wellington, the car parks have been reduced somewhat. Not always a good decision in some places, however, it has happened. So yes, I do agree that bike parking should be allowed. And I do agree that all forms of transport should be considered in the bigger picture of ensuring that we are taking care of everybody's needs as well as we possibly can.
Brilliant, thank you. Right, I'm a little bit broken, so I'm going to stay seated for now. Can we get a box number four, Matthew, please? Three? Three is gone. I'm sorry. Try again. Eighteen? All right. Hey, brilliant. Look at that. Well, you get to choose another box because Matthew has gotten deferred the question to another candidate. So I'm going to throw this at you, right? Sorry, I missed. All right. Ray, would you like to actually choose a box number this time? Tākamārua? Twelve?
Twelve.
All right, and that one is question number seven. There it is. All right. "It feels like every progressive project in Wellington gets stopped by those who don't like change, i.e. judicial reviews for roading projects. How will you ensure we can become a better city to live in and not be stopped by 'not in my backyard', as also known as nimby's?"
Sorry, could you repeat the question number?
Seven.
Matthew's answer is, "I am a progressive Labour Party candidate. I have contributed and agreed to a list of policies, which you can see here." That's a Google Drive number. Are we going to share this document?
We won't share the document, but we can share any links that are in there. I can do that when I get them tonight.
Because he's answered every question and some of them refer to other answers, so it would be quite good to have that available. "I support these progressive issues and policies." I might be able to open that and... No, we'll come back to that another time. Thank you.
Okay. All right, we'll move on from there then. Niko, choose a box, please.
Let's go number six, please.
Number six, all right. Making it easy on me. Thank you. And that one is question number twenty-five. There we go. "Internationally, cities that are nicer places to walk around are considered better places to live. What will you do to improve the experience of pedestrians in Wellington, such as wider footpaths, less on-street parking, more green spaces, protection from the wind and rain, et cetera?"
Kia ora, so immediately following high school, I had the opportunity to live in Vienna, Austria, which is widely considered to be one of the most livable cities in the world, with fantastic public transport, awesome walking, cycling infrastructure, and really clever street design for personal vehicles. So I've seen firsthand what a livable city looks like. And admittedly, they do have a perk, a few perks of geography over us, like, for example, they don't have hills. But that said, I firmly support all of these measures. In addition to these, I think something that does often get left out of the conversation when we talk about sustainable and livable street design is disabled access. And that was one thing that I felt was lacking in the recently proposed Golden Mile Plan for our central city. I think we need to ensure that even things like bus stops or indeed light rail stops are accessible for our elderly and disabled whanau. And we should also provide options that guarantee mobility parking and other disability amenities around the city. So, yeah, totally, totoko all of these things and think that wherever we implement them, we should be thinking of our disabled whanau as well.
Aye. I also noticed that that was missing from the Golden Mile Plan, so thank you for bringing that up. Ellie?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three? All right. Stretch. Now I have high five stuck in my head. What have I done to myself? Sorry, everybody. All right, and that is question number twenty-one. "What are you personally going to do to role-model climate action change, such as biking to work every day, going zero-waste, eating a plant-based diet, and again, et cetera?"
Well, I think there's more to role modelling climate change than what's listed in this question. I work with the most vulnerable. And our people riding a bike to work isn't actually even on their radar. One of the things that is important to the people that we house in terms of emergency housing, transitional housing spaces, and social housing, is the need to ensure that the basics of how to rid waste well, how to... Look, you know, those real basic things, how to grow food. That's important in climate change. How to recycle. So some of these questions are actually not... They're relevant to some parts of the community, but one message is when you look after those less likely to have a good experience than you look after everybody. I see climate change also as an equity issue. Kia ora.
Sam is loving that. All right, and a box number for Matthew, please. Twenty-nine? I think we still have that one, yes. There we go.
I'm also a gardener and have been off and on for ten years. Definitely learnt that it was something that was lacking in my formative years, connection to the land.
Yes, Ray has been gardening for a very long time now. Huh, landscaping, really?
Yeah, we don't get to grow as many veggies as I'd like.
Yes, we really don't have the soil for veggies at our place, unfortunately. Right, question number four. "This year, there will be a Maori ward councillor." Ta-da.
Oh, wow.
"How do you see Wellington City Council achieving true co-governance with Manu Fenua through you?"
Bear with me on my Tereo, but this is a long answer, the one that I was asking for earlier. Firstly, there will be a list of two Manu Fenua representatives on council committees. This question needs to take that into account. I would pursue a strong unified relationship with both representatives. I would support the representatives to achieve their goals. I would be an influential navigator with council officers and other councillors. I expect that the representatives will consult with their iwi ronanga. So I would work with them to increase their voice and participation in committee. I would represent Maori of all iwi. So in return, I would seek the support of the reps to advance issues for all Matawaka Maori who call our city home. At the council table, where the Manu Fenua representatives do not participate, I would want to represent Manu Fenua. As one of sixteen voices at the table, I would need to build relationships with the mayor and other councillors to progress issues for Manu Fenua. I have the relationship skills to work with different views and personalities to achieve results. Because I whakapapa te atiau ke pāneke, taranaki whanau, I can support the mayor and councillors with strong connections to my iwi. I can also provide important and relevant insights to support good governance. I can also support and influence their decision-making, which ultimately affects all Maori. Kia ora.
Oh, I reckon you did pretty good with that one, Ray. Thank you very much. Right, let's flip it up again. Ellie, choose a number, please.
Nineteen.
Nineteen? All right. We are. We're doing very well on the questions, actually. All right, and that is question number twelve. "Did you agree with the Wellington City Council's decision to require vaccine passes for entry to public ratepayer-supported facilities despite no scientific reason to justify the policy?"
The vaccination wasn't just about the individual that received the vaccination. The vaccination was about protecting those who did not have the ability to receive the vaccination. As a Maori candidate, one of the things that we do as Maori is we take care of each other. And one of those things was to actually have the vaccination in order for those of our people who had the inability to receive that vaccination, comorbidities, complex health needs, and all of those matters. It's about taking care of everybody. And sometimes, you know what? You have to make that choice about looking after others. And so in terms of the vaccination, that was my position on that. I didn't have to take it. However, I needed to take care of others that didn't have the ability to do that.
Yeah, me henui, Ellie, that's fantastic. As someone who is immunocompromised and on immunosuppressants, I was actually in hydrotherapy at the end of last year while the vaccine passes were a go. And I've actually stopped going this year when the vaccine pass mandates were lifted because I didn't feel safe being around that many people without a mask anymore. So, yes, that is exactly why we do it. Thank you for that. Niko, choose a number.
Kia ora, number seven, please.
Number seven, all right. Maybe? There we go. All right, number fifteen, if I can push the right button. There we go. "What is your immediate actionable plan for upgrading decaying and failing infrastructure, such as sewage, water, and stabilisation of hillsides for critical routes, and suspending non-critical projects?"
Kia ora, absolutely. So the hot topic for this election is obviously going to be our pipe infrastructure. I think you would be hard-pressed to find a candidate this election who isn't going to promise to upgrade the pipes. So I'm just going to give that one a skip. But aside from that, I have a number of positions on increasing our city's climate resilience and upgrading our infrastructure to more accurately reflect the environmental conditions that we're going to be faced with this decade and next decade. I think over the past couple of weeks, we've had a small window into what weather events could look like in the future. And so I think it's incredibly important to work with our Fenua to look at our land and allow it to do what it is designed to do in terms of supporting ourselves to a climate-friendly response. Now, this can look like ensuring that our streams are clear and carrying fresh water and are free of sediment. This can look like planting the right trees in problem areas to maintain that soil and keep the hillsides together. It can also look like stabilising our Fenua at the coastal levels with things like seawalls or building kelp forests to preserve the coastal erosion against rising sea levels, which is a very real possibility. All of these kinds of resilience measures are in the public good. And I think anybody who is going to be elected to this seat needs to have a really, really good idea of how we're going to implement these plans whilst respecting Maori customary rights in all of these areas. So, yeah, I think infrastructure spending is incredibly important. And all those critical projects that are hot-button issues this campaign, I'm committed to funding. Kia ora.
That sounds like a fantastic expansion on last night's flood mitigation question, actually. Brilliant. Ray, do you want to choose a box number this time or are we going to the audience?
Let's pick a hidden number of something like sixteen.
Yes, there we go. Yeah, sorry, Sam, seventeen's gone already. You're pushing those buttons. You should know this. All right, question number nineteen. "Wellington City Council will get extra rates revenue from increased housing density. What actual steps will you take to improve services to these corridor suburbs, including community services and utilities?"
Michael's answer is...
Matthew's answer is?
Matthew's answer. Sorry, Matthew. "Drive an urban redevelopment programme as part of 'Let's Get Wellington Moving' between the CBD and Newtown that includes housing, retail, business, and light industry. I will also support twenty-minute walking catchments to stations on the Johnsonville Line, at the end of which I live." Cheers.
All right. Ellie, would you like to choose a number? Please don't say no.
Um, let's go for thirty.
All right. Right up the end it is. So that is question number ten. What are you going... Haven't we done this already?
I thought we did.
Might have been a similar one.
Yeah, it's the same as that previous question about tangtai.
Yes. Okay, yes, let's go to another box.
Okay, twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, all right. She's making me work for it.
So you can relax at the end.
There we go, number twenty. "Wellington City Council has committed to normalising Tereo Maori. There is a slight difference to this question. How much Tereo do you speak? And how will you encourage and help other councillors to increase their use?"
An answer to the first sentence. Normalising Tereo Maori isn't naming a street and it isn't putting something in the traffic light that looks red and green. That is not what normalising Tereo Maori. For me, normalising Tereo Maori is being, having the ability to be at the decision-making table to actually korero and the other person and the other people on the other side can either interpret it or it's being interpreted for them. That's Tereo Maori usage. In terms of the Tereo Maori that I speak, unfortunately, I too did not have the ability to attend Ko Hangareo, Kūrako Papa Maori, or those opportunities that are now in without telling you my age. However, I was brought up to understand tikanga and what was right in Tereo Maori. That there is a point of difference also. My children are fluent speakers of Tereo and they had that opportunity. And I absolutely support that. Being taught Tereo Maori isn't always about a class and going to... Being taught Tera'au Maori isn't always about a class and going to an education centre. It's also about having the ability to sit next to those of us that know it and be immersed in it. It's not just about a textbook. There's more to learning Tera'au Maori than that. And I yearn for that ability. And I don't have that ability because my kumatawa, my tupuna, my kia are not here to do that. So one of the things that I think would encourage councillors to understand that is to know what it means to not have the Rau. To know what it means to not understand tikanga. To know what it means to be the lone voice at the table. Because being Maori is often that. And I'm really comfortable to be that Maori alongside anybody else who sits next to me. And that's what I will do to ensure that Tera'au Maori is the kopapa of council.
Fantastic. Okay, I'm just having a moment, it's fine. Right, fantastic, thank you so much. Nico, choose a number, please.
Number eight, please.
Number eight, alright. And Ellie, I'm sorry to tell you, but you did tell us how old you are. You're twenty-one.
Kia ora. That was a great birthday.
Brilliant. Alright, and we have question number six. Newtown has put forward an excellent plan for high-density housing which didn't impact our low-rise areas. How will you support this plan if you're elected?
Kia ora. So I have had a look at this plan with my campaign manager. It was on a day where we had a few other things to look through, so I can't tell you the exact specifics of all of this. That said, I do understand that they put forward a number of really good areas around Riddiford Street and the hospital, which could be upgraded with density without compromising the facades and storefronts. I think that's a reasonable option. And as councillor, I am committed to improving our housing density wherever we can whilst preserving, where possible, the unique heritage of our city's architecture. It is nice to be able to see our history in the buildings that we walk past every day, but I think it's nicer to have our whanau with a warm, dry home and a roof over their head. So sometimes hard decisions do have to be made, but I am committed to engaging with the Newtown community and all communities across our city to deliver a workable density model for our city. Kia ora.
Brilliant, thank you so much. Alright, final box.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Matthew will take twenty-four.
Twenty-four, alright. And that is question number nine. I cycle every day in Wellington. No, not me personally. Yes, even in the interesting weather. What are you doing to support me as I help you reduce congestion and fight climate change? Please be specific and address safety concerns of cyclists.
I am a cyclist too. It's my preferred mode of travel. I understand your concerns. I once thought that Wellington is not a good city for cycleways because of driveways and narrow roads, but I came to the conclusion that we just have to get on with it. In quotation marks. We need to build safe cycleways as early and as fast as we can to ensure the benefits you described and others. I favour the transitional approach which allows for trials before making permanent changes. Cycling and cycleways are part of Wellington's future. I would like to see more effort from council in communicating the benefits of cycleways and cycling to noncyclists. This includes the benefits to businesses and other road users. I would also like to see support for getting more people on bikes. I will advocate for grants to support cycle programmes, especially for Maori, Pacific and new migrant communities. Kia ora.
Alright, thank you for that. And now it is eight o'clock, so we are going to take our break. When we come back, I will be back over there and we will be doing hard-hitting questions. We'll see you shortly. Alright, welcome back, everybody. We've had a good break and our candidates have had a mingle with our audience and each other, which is fantastic to see. So going into hard-hitting questions, these are questions that every candidate has to answer, and I'm sorry, but you cannot use your dodge or your defer cards. Alright, let's try that again. Hard-hitting question number one. What is your position on the Three Waters Reform and why have you come to that position? Nico, take it away.
Kia ora. Yeah, so I realise this is definitely another one of those hot-button issues that's being asked at Meet the Candidate events all over the Mautu at the moment. So I think my answer won't be particularly unique. That said, what I will say about Three Waters is I appreciate the intent and I think it is definitely a fact that water infrastructure, as we can see, so obviously in our capital city, has been neglected by local bodies for a matter of decades. That said, I am sceptical of centralisation by government where Iwi are not necessarily made an integral part of the process. There have been moves made in more recent times by the minister to increase Maori representation in the implementation plan of Three Waters, but there were flags raised early on by people like Ra'uriti Waiteiti of the Maori Party that hinted that these might be more token gestures and not adequate Tiriti compliant governance roles that would be assigned to Iwi hapu and Maori community leaders. So my position is broadly in favour of the intent, although I do have reservations about the ability of local communities to have control over their way and also the opportunity for Maori to have sovereignty over their share of their ancestral waters, which I believe is of paramount importance.
Alright, thank you. Ellie, what are your thoughts?
My thoughts are that I believe that Minister Mahuta had every intention that Maori would be at the table because we are Tiriti partner. So in terms of the Three Waters Reform, as a Tiriti partner, yes, I agree. And if councils are not in that space of having Maori at the table, they are not acting as a Tiriti partner.
Alright, thank you. And Ray, do you have Matthew's answer ready?
Is that Matthew Ra'uriti?
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 Yes.
Matthew's answer is, short and succinct also, I strongly support Three Waters. It will allow us to access funding that we can't currently. This will allow councils to release budgets, reassess budgets. I do believe we should look at other measures and capacity building too, in case Three Waters or alternatives is dragged out.
Alright, thank you. So moving on to hard-hitting question number two. Could you please share your thoughts on COVID-19 vaccination and whether you have any affiliation with Voices for Freedom, Freedom Rights Coalition, or any other organisation in the occupation of parliament? Now, I believe that you two have both partially answered this question already, so you may answer just the other part unless you would like to reiterate. So Ellie, we'll get you to start this time, please.
No, no, no. Tau. And my position on vaccination, you know, it's collective responsibility. He Maori aho. We take care of each other. Manaki tanga, ranga tira tanga. And in order for us to do that, it's a collective responsibility. The occupation of parliament, disrespectful. Disrespectful regardless. You know, do unto others as you would do unto yourself. And no, I don't go to church every Sunday. However, I do have respect for others. And if there is, the voices of freedom need to allow people to have their voice without being dictated to, without being abused, and without being told they are wrong because they're ruining somebody else's lifestyle. Being Maori is about wananga. Wananga, wananga. You don't have to agree, but you damn right should respect the view of others.
Brilliant, thank you. Right, we're going to round robin, so can we get Matthew's answer, please?
Aye. Phone on power-saving mode. Matthew's answer. I believe in science and that vaccines are effective and save lives. I am vaccinated and boosted and will continue to take boosters if asked. I'm not affiliated to any organisation involved in the parliamentary occupation, including VFF or FARC. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. And so Nico, your turn.
Yeah, totally topical both of those answers. I'm in favour of a science-based, public health-based approach to vaccination, and for that reason, I am also vaccinated and boosted. I am totally opposed to the occupation of parliament, and I think it was a show of real privilege for those people who turned up there and were allowed to stay for a whole month before anything was done. Now, one thing I will say is I actually was there on the day that the riots kicked off because I saw a lot of angry brown people and a lot of angry cops looking at each other. And we know historically that that particular pairing does not go well. So I went down and I provided medical care to our whanau who had been conned and coaxed into an illegal occupation and were then hurt by the police force in response. What I saw down there is all of the predominantly pakeha, conspiracy theorists and organisers had scarpered the minute things turned ugly. And the only people who were left were a whole bunch of really angry and misled Maori. And I just, I felt my heartbreak. That was the saddest thing that I've seen, I think, in a very, very long time. Actually, I treated a young Maori woman who had had a rubber bullet that had struck her head and she was bleeding from the head very profusely. After treating that wound, you know, she was pretty out of it and we had to get her to Newtown Hospital in a hurry. At the time, I was looking at some of the people around her, some of the mumi, some of the hurt and the anger on their faces as that woman was getting carried away. And what I saw was not Maori who are angry about vaccines or think that for some reason they're going to implant a tracking chip or, you know, poison you or all of these other nonsense things that are being promulgated by the organisers of that protest. What I saw was someone who was part of a community that had been continually failed by our health system, continually let down by a government and a colonial entity that did not take into consideration the rights and personal security of Maori people. And for that reason, they had allowed themselves to be conned by these conspiracy groups. So bit of a long answer there, but absolutely opposed to all of it. And I'm really, really sad that so many of our whanau were dragged into that mess.
Alright, thank you for that, everybody. So hard-hitting question number three. What do you believe your role as a Maori ward councillor will be and how will you best represent our voice among the other fourteen councillors around the table? Nico, you get to go first.
Kia ora. Yep, so my aspiration is nothing less than the total fulfillment of Tiriti au Waitangi. For that reason, I will never, ever back down on our people around the council table, no matter what. That said, there is a lot of difficulty when you're dealing with an urban Maori population that come from many different Iwis around the Mautu, many different Mano Fenua groups. Even in Wellington, we have three, including one tribal confederation. I myself hail from Mano Fenua of Ngatzitaurangatira. And I believe that whoever achieves this position as the first Maori ward councillor in Wellington must use their position to take into account the ambitions and aspirations of Mano Fenua, of all other Maori living in the city, and Maori as a general population around the country who are and always have been a sovereign nation. So my aspirations for this seat are transformational and I will stop at nothing to implement tinorangatira tanga and honour the Tiriti wherever I can.
Awesome, thank you. Ellie, you're up next.
So as a Maori ward councillor, it is really important to understand your values and for myself and what is consistent for all Maori, whether you're Mano Fenua, tora ahire, wherever you stand and wherever you place your feet, our values and our tikanga are important. And that is something that, yes, Maori do agree on. So the things like manaki tanga, taking care of each other regardless of what colour you are at the table. Kotahi tanga, allowing the space for all voices to be heard equally and in an equitable manner. Ranga tira tanga, to be able to allow others to stand in their space and do it well and be heard. Listen, be heard, and be respectful about that. Those are three values that I take very seriously. The other most important thing about being a Maori ward councillor is a fa'kapa. Everybody has a fa'kapa. And they bring that fa'kapa to the table regardless. And the things from the past must inform the future. And that there is a tangata Fenua response across the board by all Maori across the country. And that is something that I believe that we stand collective on right across Aotearoa, regardless of what Iwi, what hapu, what wano, and what marae and what whana we are all associated to. Because that's where we get our strength. Our strength is being one people regardless of all of those other matters. So as the first Maori ward councillor here, that will be what I will take to the table. I will represent the voice of the people regardless of what spectrum of the community they come from. And I will always go back to that equity issue. Those voices that are least likely to be heard must have a voice and must be represented. And that's the Maori voice that I will bring to the table. I have much respect and I have very strong relationships with Mano Fenua here already with the mahi that I do. The voice among the fourteen councillors is the voice of we all represent somebody, we all belong to somebody, and collectively we must do something. So get rid of the hoo ha around who should be doing what and what I need for myself and let's start thinking collectively in order to ensure that Wellington is transformational, the vibe comes back, everybody is taken care of regardless of where you sit in the community, and let's just damn well work together and make the changes that are needed.
Fantastic. That's exactly what the council is supposed to do. They are supposed to work together for the good of their community. Thank you so much. Now, can we please get Matthew's answer for hard-hitting question number three?
If with your support I am successful and become the first Maori ward city councillor, I will see it as my job to represent all Maori who voted for me, all Maori who didn't vote for me, and all Maori who couldn't vote for me because they were on the general roll. I will also apply a Maori perspective for the benefit of all Wellingtonians. Creating room for other voices is important to me. I want to see more Maori participating in local government. I want to see our people making submissions and sharing their fa'karo. It will be my mission to help Tonga and Tefenoa navigate council. I also haven't talked about the aspirations of our people. I want to support Tonga and Tefenoa to have excellent careers and be successful in business. I want to see Maori businesses get an increased share of economic development funding. Maori businesses tend to be long-term, intergenerational and employ Maori. The Maori economy contributes to rates. Wellington tents, for example, pays one million per annum. We have been here- We have been here for more than 182 years. Ake, ake, ake. Also, there are 14 other councillors and one mayor. And to annet committee, two mana finua representatives. I will represent Tonga Tafenua by providing a strong and informed voice. I will work collaboratively with the representatives and the iwi leadership committee to represent all Maori. I will be accessible because I am community-focused. At the table, I can provide historical reference to local issues because I've lived here all my life. By fakapapa to original landowners dating back to the 1830s. I can also provide informed advice on local matters to other councillors speeding up decision-making. I can achieve gains for all Maori by expeditious consultation with mana finua. I have extensive connections with existing councillors, new candidates, council officers, and most importantly, the community I represent. Thank you, Matthew. Kia ora.
All right, thank you for that. Now, we have some time to kill, so would our candidates like to open our final three boxes? We're happy for your input.
14.
Right. Sounds like a pretty solid, um...
14.
Oh, Ray's going to take over for me, so... He hasn't turned the camera around? Oh, he has! Hey, good on him!
Question 27. "We need more affordable housing. How will you ensure more land is freed up to build high-density housing? Will you advocate for the council to help buy land in the right places, such as along the city to southern corridor?"
Affordable housing. Some of the things mentioned in this question, um, I don't necessarily agree with. From a cultural perspective, high-density housing doesn't allow us to connect as a people. It does not allow us to be who we are as Maori. However, there is, I think there's a bigger picture to this whole affordable housing corridor that is circulating across many places. I have a huge reputation and experience working in, for the most vulnerable communities and housing them. And affordable housing comes at a cost. And often, the people that I work with, affordable housing isn't even on their radar. A milk and a bread is, but somewhere sustainable is something better to look forward to. I believe that the council has taken a position on community housing that they didn't think through very well. As a community, as a person who leads two community housing entities, we're already here and ready to build. And I keep getting told that the Wellington city housing is going to become a community housing provider. Why do we have to wait for them? What's the holdup? There are many community housing providers already in the city that are ready to move, that provide strong wraparound services to the most vulnerable that require these houses, have designs in place that are suitable for more than just one part of the community. Let's, let's look at housing and with a wider view. Let's look at housing as an opportunity to ensure that our mukapuna can move straight back into those housing, those houses that we build today. Housing is not about today. It is not a commodity. And I believe that some of the decisions that have been made by council now is to pay off some debt that they should have sorted out before. Let's not use the current housing crisis to sort out the business that should have been sorted out a long time ago. Right now, I know community housing providers that are actually building in the lower hut region but are based central Wellington. What's that about? We're ready to move. We have the support of not only the people in the government sector, we have land. Get rid of the barriers. Get the infrastructure moving so we can do this. Think about the health and disability of our people, which is not important. Think about the parents who have babies. Intergenerational way of living will not get taken care of with just high-density housing. Open your minds up and take a look at what's happening around the world. Everybody and more than just high-density housing should be thought about in the wider spectrum. We can't continue to allow one part of the community to dictate how we live now and what we build for the future of our mukapuna when it comes to housing.
I love the passion in that, that's fantastic. Thank you so much. All right, Nico, choose your last box. Kind of?
15, please.
Question number 13. "What is your current stance on developing safe cycle lanes throughout the city?"
Support them and let's have more.
Right, short and sweet, got to love it. So, that means, right, that means you get box number 25.
Not as good as the last question and the answer. I'm almost enticed from that answer.
Would you like me to read it out for you? Push the button. Question number two. "What is your biggest priority for the next term and how do you intend on delivering that?" Ray's hiding.
Matthew's answer to question number two. "I believe, I believe this to be fast-tracking new housing and infrastructure to support the city to be a place to live. This includes zoning to allow intensified building, completing the cycleway network, creating more bus lanes, walking plans, designing for those with reduced mobility and accessible issues, and more community facilities. In short, promoting the 15-minute city concept, these measures are also important for tackling climate change. I will be voting for these priorities. Funding for infrastructure like safe cycleways and more bus lanes would be a priority because reducing car dependency has far-reaching benefits for all Wellingtonians, including those who need to use their car or choose to..." "Far-reaching benefits for all Wellingtonians, including those who need to use their car or choose to use their car. As well as prioritising funding, I would support lobbying central government for funding to complete infrastructure such as cycleways and LGWM." I'm not clear what that is.
Let's get Wellington moving.
Let's get Wellington moving. Increasing housing for, increasing housing will benefit Tonga Tafenua who are more likely to rent. Stabilising the rental market and reducing the percentage of income spent on rent are steps to home ownership. I would also support initiatives like urban papakainga and rent-to-own. Thank you.
I miss rent-to-own. I've been looking for one of those for years. All right, so we have now run out of box questions. Before we address a comment from one of our online viewers, do any of our in-studio audience have a question that they would like to throw out? I hear a no, so, okay. Sam, are we able to get that comment on screen, please? Okay, we're just trying to figure out how to pull it up.
Just saying.
And then, actually, yeah. Ray, can you give Sam the microphone? Oh, there we go, right. "What a shitshow. No wonder the vast majority of people are totally disconnected from the train wreck of local body politics." That's not the one that we were looking for.
Are we, are we the shitshow?
Not sure who the shitshow is.
I hope, I hope it's not me, yeah.
No, no, there was a, there was another comment. But, okay, Sam's going to read that out for me and I'm going to address it.
That's somebody's...
There we go.
Basically, from what I've gathered, that this member who is talking to our group, who is gilboof, is like, we get no funding whatsoever for the show. So, don't sit down there and say we're funded by the UN or by local government New Zealand, okay? I've put a hell of a lot of time and effort in order to make this show work and I've had a lot of bullshit and a lot of crap from a lot of centres and a lot of upentitled people over this. I've had crap from people who are white racist people who sit down there and sit down there and have a go at me because I like to support the fact we're Maori and we're supporting Maori words because there's a national language in our country. So, yes, you might be offended by the show. Doesn't mean you have to sit there and tune in. You can sit down there and leave. And if you want to, you can also leave the group. You only just joined earlier today. I encourage free speech and that sort of thing, but I don't encourage people sitting there dissing my show and trying to make it, sit down there and call out to conspiracy theories across the world, which we have nothing to deal with and nothing to do with. So, don't sit down there and say any of that bullshit on my show again. Otherwise, you will be booted out because, as I say, you know, we get no funding from local government New Zealand and we're getting definitely no funding from the UN. I don't even think the UN would even know this show exists. And I definitely know local government New Zealand, we're probably on their radar because we're making waves and we're getting people informed all over the country. We've even exposed a neo-Nazi that has been on our show.
Not knowingly.
Not knowingly.
But we do feel that every candidate standing should be allowed to have their voice heard. And we didn't know that at the time, so...
And actually, to be honest, you know, we've been accused of also not inviting candidates when we have been. So, you know, there's a lot of there. So, you know, yes, I'm not in the host seat tonight, I'm in a different seat. But I don't like it when people sit there and say their absolute drivel on my show. So, you know, just be noted, you've been warned.
Right, so for a bit of a karma response, thank you, Sam. Absolutely and unequivocally, no. We have received absolutely no funding apart from what has come from a couple of candidates who are not even in the Wellington City Council and from ticket buyers who have donated $5 or occasionally less for a ticket to watch the show. Everything that we are doing just about is coming out of Sam's other business's pocket. Not even city councils are funding us to do this. I may right now be sitting in front of a New Zealand flag, wrong way, a New Zealand flag. But that's only because it is in the venue that we are currently in. Everything, everything is being funded out of Sam's own pocket, so, no. But, you know, thanks for trying, come again. Right, so, now that we've gotten through that, is there anything, anything not exciting? Because I guess that was it. Do we have any online questions for our candidates? Okay, no, apparently we only have drivel in the comments section tonight. So, um...
Hope you've got a bib.
I tell you what, if we are getting some of that UN funding, I think we could chug it towards the cycleways or let's get Wellington moving.
Yes, we should definitely be getting it into Wellington, getting Wellington moving, that's for sure.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, feed the hungry and the homeless, as Sam said.
But however, since we're in a church, tēngua te matoa, mēte te māti, mēte wāriu atapu. Amenee.
Amenee.
Turn it off if you don't want to listen.
Right, yes, as Sam said earlier, if you are not impressed by what is going on with our show, you can turn it off at any point. You are in your own home, change the channel. You are on the internet, you have infinite choices. So, I think we're going to leave it there and we are going to move into our closing statements. Does anyone in particular want to lead us off? I think our candidates are having a bit too much of a giggle right now. Does Matt have a closing statement or is that everything from Matthew? Ray has left his phone and his microphone behind. He will double-check, hold on a moment. Okay, no, unfortunately, we do not have a closing statement from Matthew, so Nico, take it away.
Okay, Kia ora. Hey, um, thank you all at home for tuning into this quite interesting evening. It's my first time, it's my first time on a show like this, so I think, I think we've done pretty well. I think, yeah. I tell you what, whanau, I actually, I've been to a few of these debates now and I think everybody who is Maori and tāfanga lūi atara can be really thankful that we have three really awesome candidates that are standing for this seat. I personally, as a Maori voter, feel really, really confident that whoever of us takes that seat, that the seat will be in good hands. That said, I'd love it to be me. So, as I mentioned at the start, whanau, my priorities are growing a green, sustainable city with green spaces, public transport, more dense, affordable housing for our whanau and a climate resilience plan that takes into account the urgent reality of climate change that is already here. Aside from that, I will apply a tēriri lens on all of my mahi within the role of Maori councillor. And I will also push to return our land back to our Tonga Tafenua who have been here for time immemorial. Aside from that, whanau, you can count on me for good relationship building, getting things done and never backing down on our people one inch. Kia ora.
Right, na mēhi. Ali, take it away, please.
What he said. Kia ora, firstly, thank you to the organisers. Like Nico, I was like, okay, what's happening here? First time, you know, virgin campaigner. Absolutely virgin campaigner. But every bit of me is about Maori. To all you racist assholes, we're not going anywhere. We are here to stay. Our voice is important. And if you don't like it, you know what to do. We are resilient. We've been here for many, many years. This is our land. We represent our voice. And we will create the space for more of us to step into. As the Maori candidate, I too have a lot of respect for all Maori and especially Nico and Matthew for actually doing what we're doing today. It's not an easy thing to do, but, you know, if you ain't doing it, then eh noho. Eh noho, tu takina to wahā, ki pai. My position is, across any decisions that are made at council, it's about consensus. It's about the collective outcome. It's about action, it's about success, it's about leadership, and most of all, it's about our mukapuna. We must start to make decisions to ensure that our mukapuna have a pathway to aspirational, successful, and ranga tira tanga outcomes. That's what I stand for. And regardless of who gets in, the one thing we all have in common is that we have whakapapa. We have whakapapa, we are Maori, and we care. And unlike some of you racist pricks out there, we have respect for each other. Sleep well.
Absolutely brilliant, thank you. Absolutely brilliant. Thank you so much. As a voter for te fangenui aata myself, I thought this was going to help. I still have a very difficult decision ahead of myself. Yes, three amazing candidates. Unfortunately, only two of them could be here in person tonight. I would have loved to have been able to meet Matthew in person as well. But things happen. That is all right. Thank you, Matthew, for sending in your answers for us. Thank you to Nico and Ellie for joining us here tonight. Thank you to our in-studio audience for taking the time out of your evening and being here. Unfortunately, we don't have the wide-angle camera tonight, so... Oh, there we go. Hold on. Ray's turned the camera around. Pull him up. And the other way. There we go. Yeah, look, we have an audience. Thank you to all of you who have joined us at home, no matter what your views, it's still more views for us. So tomorrow night, Sam will be back in the hosting seat. We will be at Kapiti Impact Hub for the Kapiti Merrill Show. Thursday night, I believe, we have... Thank you. Hut Central Ward for the Hut City Council. And then on Friday night, Sam, where are we? Hey, you said it right this time. Good on you. Motu kaerangi, Eastern Ward for Wellington Central at the Pooniki Rugby Club in Kilkerni. We will be back, well, there or here, depending on how you're joining us, tomorrow night, 7pm. Thank you so much. See you next time.